Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your participation. My name is Neil Andrews. I'm going to be your moderator this morning. I'm the president of the Mayor's and Council Members Department of the League, and also a member of the Board of Directors. Please, if I can have your attention, we want to get started here. If I can have your attention, please. As I say, I'm Neil Andrews. I'll be your moderator this morning. I'm a council member from the city of Ventura, and the president of the Mayor's and Council Members Department, and also a member of the Board of Directors of the League. I want to welcome you to this session of the New Mayors and Council Members Academy. The conference materials that are going to be presented to you all are going to be available electronically online. For the web address containing the materials, stop by the League registration desk, or download the mobile app, CA Cities. I don't know whether that's case-sensitive, but if it is, the C-A-C is capitalized, C-A-Cities. We need to have you tell us what you think about these programs that we present to you. So we want every person here to fill out an evaluation for this conference. Check your emails early next week. You'll obtain the online link for the survey to give you your evaluation. We really appreciate your feedback. We really need your feedback in order to make these programs even better in the future. Mobile devices, please turn them off, or at the very best, put them on vibrate. They do interfere with the sound system, so if you'll take care of that now, I'd appreciate it. Assuming time allows, we'll take questions from the audience at the end of the session. And I want to put a pitch in now. Jim, I don't know what that means. Oh, okay, all right. We'll do that, we'll do that in just a second. The Mayor's and Council Members Department will be issuing a survey via our electronic newsletter later this month. We'd like to get your input on how the departments can better serve you and get you in touch with the resources that are essential for electeds to serve their communities. We hope that this survey will provide a comprehensive forum for you to share your input. However, please feel free to contact Sarah Rounds on the League staff at any time if you have ideas that our department should consider. Again, the survey will hit your email boxes later this month. Finally, I want to put a pitch in for all of you for the Mayor's and Council Members Executive Conference in June, from the 24th to the 26th, in Monterey. You're going to find that that is a renewed conference. We had them many years ago. Had to, because of the recession and so forth, had to scale back a little bit. We're reinstituting that program this year, and it is an executive-level discussion. So I encourage you to consider attending that one on June 24th and 26th. Now, Jim just asked me to make sure that we all start this program with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think we'll do that. So if you'd all please rise. The flag is to my right. And follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now if you'll be seated, we'll start with the program. I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you the speaker bios, both of them at the outset, because this is kind of a team operation. First Rod Gould. Rod was appointed City Manager of Santa Monica in January of 2010. He received a degree in economics and political science from Yale in 1979, and earned a master's degree in education in 1982, and in public administration from Harvard in 1985. Before becoming City Manager of Santa Monica, Rod spent four years as City Manager of Poway, nine years as City Manager of San Rafael, five years as City Manager of Monrovia, and five years as Assistant City Manager of Waller Creek. Rod is a member of the Executive Board of ICMA as a West Coast Vice President. He was Chair of the League of California Cities Pension Reform Committee from 2008 to 2012. He was President of the City Managers Department of the League of California Cities in 2005, and served on the League's Board of Directors from 2007 to 2009. He is a current member of the Board of Directors of the Institute for Local Government in Sacramento. He was awarded the Wes McClure Award as a Manager of Distinction by the City Managers Department of the League and the Cal ICMA Hall of Fame Award. Our next speaker will be Gleem Davis. Gleem joined the City Council in February 2009. Before joining the Council, Gleem was a member of the Santa Monica Planning Commission and was the co-chair of Santa Monicans for Renters' Rights. Gleem has been active in the community since she moved to Santa Monica in 1986. Gleem began her public service as a member of the Board of Directors of WISE, Senior Services. Since then, she has chaired numerous organizations, including the Santa Monica Child Care and Early Education Task Force and the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District's Facilities Bond Advisory Committee. She is a passionate advocate for the character, livability, and sustainability and safety of Santa Monica's neighborhoods. She also maintains her strong commitment to lifelong learning and educational and economic opportunity. Gleem graduated from Harvard Law School in 1981 and from USC in 1978. She was born in Los Angeles and grew up in San Gabriel and Arcadia. Gleem and her husband, John Prindle, have one son, Jackson, who is 18-years-old. If you'll welcome our speakers, we'll start, I guess, with John. Oh, Rod, I'm sorry. Gleem, Gleem, oh, I'm sorry. We'll get it right, we'll get it right. I promise you, before we're done here, we'll get it right. We'll have questions at the end.
I'm short, so I need to adjust this. Hang on one sec. Just let me get myself timed here, so I don't bore you all to death. Well, thank you all for coming this morning. It's a great honor to come and speak to you. I have been on the City Council since 2009. I was appointed due to the passing of one of our longtime City Council members, Herb Katz. And those were large shoes to fill. But one of the things about being an appointed council member in the first instance is people's expectations might be a little lower. You don't come into office having made any campaign promises, because of course you weren't part of the campaign. And I think I was lucky in that regard. I suspect very few of you in this room can say the same thing. So I want to talk about a little bit, you know, you're new to a council, or you're a new mayor, and why are you there? And I'm sure everybody in the course of a campaign has to answer the question, "Why are you running? Why do you want to be on the City Council? Why do you want to be a mayor?" And in the course of a campaign, nobody says, "Hey, because I'm power-hungry." Everyone says they have noble purposes, they want to build a community, they want to enhance and sustain the city. And the good news is that most people really mean it when they give that answer. And I'm sure everyone in this room wanted to be in elective office because they thought they could make a valuable contribution to the city. But one of the things I learned moving from being an advocate to being on the City Council is there's a big difference from being a member of the community and advocate for a particular position. Everyone comes from someplace. I was an education advocate. Other people might be environmental advocates. Other people might be working on development issues within the city. I was on the Planning Commission as well. But there's a big difference between coming and being an advocate and then actually having to govern. Governing is very different than anything you've done in the past, I guarantee you. So the campaign's over, and now what? You used to have a very clear mission. This is what I want to accomplish. And you've made promises to your community about the things you're going to try and do. But none of us were elected kings. So we don't have fiat power. I know we all wish we did, but we don't. And so what you end up having to do is say, "Okay, I've come with this perspective. I've come with this plan. I've come with these ideas. But how do I put them into action? How do I make them come to fruition?" And the bottom line is, you as an individual cannot do that. That's the point of democracy. You have other council members to deal with. You have the City Manager and the City Staff to deal with. And in fact, you have your own constituents to deal with. In Santa Monica, we are blessed with a very intelligent, engaged electorate, and we are cursed with a very intelligent, engaged electorate. And so what happens is, on any issue, there is always someone who stands up and says, "The residents think." And the answer is that nobody speaks for all the residents. I don't know how it is in your city. In Santa Monica, if I talk to five people, I get 10 opinions. And so what ends up happening is how do you take your ideas, the reasons you ran, and convert them into being a very effective councilperson? Some of you may have come from board and commission situations, and that's good training, because you're on a board or a commission and you learn that you have to work with your colleagues. But on a board and commission, which is typically an appointed commission, you don't think about, "And in two, for however many years your terms are for, I have to run again." And that makes a big difference, because you can't help but think about, "If I have these things I want to accomplish, how long is it going to take me to accomplish them? How long do I want to be on the council?" There's a famous line from Aaron Sorkin in The American President, where the president says, "I spent so much time trying to keep my job, I forgot to actually do my job." And that's a line I think about often on the City Council, that our job is not to get reelected. Our job is not to make political hay. Our job is to do what's best for our cities. And sometimes that's very difficult, particularly on very controversial issues. But if you have experience as a board and commissioner, you've experienced the kind of pressures you're going to feel, the kind of input you're going to feel. And I just guarantee you, you'll get more of the same only at a more intense level. I don't know how it is in your cities. In our city, we actually have a very active political party. It was mentioned that I was the co-chair of Santa Monicans for Renters' Rights. And that's a 35-year-old organization that actually endorses candidates in the city of Santa Monica and has been very successful at putting City Council candidates on the council. It also has been successful at electing school board members. We have a rent control board, rent control board members, and Santa Monica College Board of Trustees members. So typically, and I've been lucky enough to be in at least nominally the majority of the council, because we coalesce around issues like affordable housing, preservation of rent control, that sort of thing. But on any given issue, you can be in the minority of the council. And I think that's what's really important to remember, is that if you're doing your job, you will not always be voting with the same people. Because on any given issue, there's going to be a wide range of opinions. So you may come in and think, "I'm part of the majority, and we're going to run things, and that's going to be great." But there may be instances where your conscience or your intelligence, or just your heart, tells you that voting with the people you typically vote with is not the right thing to do. And all I can tell you is be courageous and do what you believe to be the right thing, regardless of whether or not it means you're in what you perceive to be the majority or the minority. And the reason for that is, at the end of the day, yes, you are accountable to your constituents, but you're also accountable to yourself. And so you have to wake up the next morning and say, "I know I did the right thing for me." We had a very controversial issue in Santa Monica involving a very large development. And I will tell you, I was sleepless for days before the big vote. I happened to be the vote in the majority, but it was a very close vote, and a very acrimonious vote. It was a four-to-three vote. And I did not sleep so well as I did the night after we finally took that vote. Because regardless of the fact, and I will tell you, there were literally thousands of people in the community who thought I had done the wrong thing. But I believed I had done the right thing, and that let me sleep at night. And believe me, you're going to need your sleep. So it's time to get to work. How are you going to do this? How are you going to deal with all these varying inputs you're going to get from members of your community, the inputs you're going to get from your staff about what's the right thing to do? And I will give you two pieces of advice on that. And one is, always keep an open mind. If you go into an issue and you've already decided what it is, is the right thing to do, and it doesn't matter what people tell you, you know what's the right thing to do, you're not going to be very effective. Because at the end of the day, nobody knows everything. The smartest person in the room can still be wrong. And so as you get all this input, and you have an open mind, what you will find is that your positions may not change at a fundamental value level, but as you begin to see what's going on in other people's minds, what they're thinking is, you will be able to start to build a foundation for compromise. And that's really key. Because governing is a team sport. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. But it is important to always keep in mind that the best decisions are the product of an open mind and compromise, and not people being ideologued about, "It's my way or the highway." The other thing is that you have to focus on the future. In Santa Monica, we are blessed with people who love the city. We also have a number of people who wish the city was the way it was in 1950. And it's hard for me to tell them, "There's no going back." And so I always tell people, "We are planning for the Santa Monica of the 2050, not trying to rebuild the Santa Monica of 1950." And that's a hard pill for people to swallow sometime, because they're nostalgic for when it was better, when it was nicer, when it was different, when there was less traffic, when it was quieter. And the fact of the matter is that a lot of the things that make people angry, that make people irritable, you have absolutely no control over. We live, we are surrounded on three sides by the city of Los Angeles. We're lucky that the other side is the Pacific Ocean. But we're surrounded on three sides by the city of Los Angeles. And so a lot of the traffic, a lot of the pollution, a lot of the things that weigh on the residents in Santa Monica, I can't do anything about. I can work with my colleagues on the City of Los Angeles Council, but the fact of the matter is that we live in a world that is ever-changing, and it's not a question of how do we stop that change, but how do we manage that change? So you can be a councilperson and be a team player, but also still feel like you are accomplishing your goals. As I said, city government is a team sport. And so what that means is, how do I establish relationships with my colleagues? How do I convince my colleagues who might be on the fence or might disagree with me that there's some merit to my position? And so that we can perhaps all come to a situation, which is one of our, what I call professional citizens, who comes to every meeting, a lovely man always refers to the win-win situation. And there are two basic rules. One is you have to count to four, unless you have five people on your council, then you only have to count to three. So for the arithmetically challenged, I wish we only had a five-person council, but we have seven. So that's what you have to do, is how do I get four people to support the position that I'm advocating? Or how do I get to a position where four people can agree on enough of what I think is important that I will feel that I've accomplished something? And I will tell you that there are people who will stand up in front of you on any given evening or afternoon, whenever your council meetings are, and tell you, "You're morons, you are so stupid, now do what I want." And on more than one occasion, I've had to remind those people in our community that the way you catch a lot more flies with honey than vinegar. So I would give you that same advice in working with your colleagues. If you tell your colleagues how dumb they are, what they don't understand, how they're not getting it, they're probably not going to be sympathetic to your position when you need something from them, like a vote. So the key is to try and get along with your colleagues. The keys to success are really very simple. No one elected you to the council to be the most brilliant person. Nobody can be the most brilliant person. You got elected, that's the good news. Your community has expressed a desire to have you represent them and govern them. So your job now is to do what they elected you to do, which is to govern. And any given day, there will be people who say, "I elected you to do X, and you didn't do X, so I'm never going to vote for you again." And in your mind, you have to go, "That's okay." Because if you're doing everything with, "Well, how am I going to get the most votes? How is this going to play? Am I going to get reelected?" Not only will you make yourself crazy, I guarantee you, you will never come to an answer that satisfies you. Because for every action you take that loses you a vote, you're making an action that may gain you a vote somewhere else. So all you can do, as I go back to this, is do your best job. Your overarching consideration is what is best for the city as a whole, not what's best for this constituency or that constituency, this person or that person. What is best for the city as a whole, and let the rest of it take care of itself. People are going to say, "I elected you to make sure that X, Y, Z didn't happen. And you've been on the council three weeks, and that hasn't happened yet. You know, what's going on here? You're letting me down." And you just have to remind them that city councils are, for better or for worse, very larg vehicles, and they turn slowly. And especially as a new councilperson or mayor, it's important that you build relationships before you really start putting stakes in the ground and trying to get people to move their positions. Because if you don't do the groundwork of building the relationships first, then when you try and get people to come to agreement, particularly on very controversial things, it'll be much more difficult to do. So in the early going, the most important thing to do is build relationships with your colleagues, even the ones that you may have disagreed with during the election. People who may have taken diametrically opposite positions. Those are the people you reach out to first. The ones who already like you already like you. So go to lunch, talk to them, give them a phone call. Say, "Now that the election's over, we can put the rhetoric behind us. How are we going to work together to do what's best for the city?" And I guarantee you, that will go a long way towards helping you accomplish your goals in the long run. Because then someone will know that you didn't run to unseat them, or you didn't run to punish them, or to knock their best friend out of the running, that your goal is to work together for the good of the city. When you're new on the council, and I have to say, I was not very good at this, it is important to listen. My mother always told me, "The ears are organs of intelligence, and the mouth is an organ of ignorance." And what that means is, sometimes we talk so much, we forget to listen. And so make sure you listen to people, not just your constituents, but your colleagues, and your City Manager, and your staff, and people who may not even have any skin in the game, but still may have an opinion. Listen to everybody, because what you will begin to hear is that these are all voices of people who may disagree with you but are concerned about the same things you're concerned with, the good of your city. So as you sit there, maybe at the beginning, and you're listening to the debate on the council, listen to what they have to say. Just don't anxiously wait. I can rarely wait till it's my turn, because I know exactly what I'm going to say. I know it's hard to do, but it's also important that you adjust your comments to what's going on in the room. A lot of people walk in with an outline. "These are the points I want to make." And you may not need to make some of those points. Someone else may have made them. And the best thing you can do at that point is say, "I agree with my colleague, council member so-and-so. So I don't really need to add anything other than this." Always give your colleagues credit where credit is due. If they're enunciating your position, you don't need to repeat it or make it sound like, "Well, hey, that was my idea first." Be grateful that you have an ally in the room. So it's really about building relationships with people. And civility is the key. Hopefully, I don't need to say that too often. But you know, politics can get very heated. People can get very passionate. A day doesn't go by that I'm not accused of being a crook. And you know, I don't think I'm a crook. But the fact of the matter is, it's easy to call people names. Your constituents will call you a name if you don't do what they like. Your colleagues will say things in the local press that you don't want to hear. And the fact of the matter is, that can be very difficult to take. And we're only human beings, and we want to sort of lash back and go, "I'm not the crook, you're the crook." That's not going to get you very far. Hopefully, you all have very thick skins. If you don't, I'm sure they're selling some somewhere out on the floor. Go out and purchase two, in case you lose the first one. You've entered into a blood sport. I have to tell you that. As John McCain famously said, "Politics is not beanbag." I'm not sure what that meant, but the fact of the matter is, you have to be willing to take the criticism and not lash back. Because some of that criticism, even if it doesn't come directly from your colleagues, you might see their fingerprints on it. And that's okay. Everyone's trying to accomplish something. You're trying to accomplish something, they are too. But if you can be civil, if you can treat each other with respect, what you will discover over time is everyone will see that is the way to go, and you will be able to be much more effective as a councilperson. So one of the things I always try and do, and Rod will be able to tell you, I'm sometimes successful and sometimes not, is look for where you have areas of agreement, even when there's disagreement. If someone says a building's too tall, and it's ugly, you may disagree that it's too tall, but you may agree that it's ugly. So start out with the area where you agree. "I agree, that building's too ugly." And I'll bet you, if we made it prettier, we wouldn't care how tall it is. But it's looking for those areas where you can find agreement with your colleagues, where you can stake out the middle territory and bring the four, the three people you need to get to a positive decision for your city. Again, it's all about relationships. This is not, I guarantee you, none of you are going to get rich doing this, and I'm sorry to tell you that right now. So this isn't about financial gain, and it isn't about looking pretty in the paper or having your name mentioned more often than someone else's. It's about doing what is best for your locality. And the best way you can accomplish that is by working with your colleagues, not against them. And oops, that's my timer telling me I've already spoken too long. But I think that's, and this is where we're going to transition into, the way you can do that often is with a good city manager, and I'm sure you all have excellent city managers. The city manager form of government is really key, because you rely on your city manager to implement the policies that you as a council member make. This slide is probably one I should look at every day of my life. How much should I talk as a council member? My timer just went off. I think you should talk as much as you need to. I try and use the Mr. Ed philosophy, which is never speak unless you have something to say. If all your colleagues have said everything, you don't need to talk. Or you can simply say, "I agree with everything my colleagues have said." You don't need to reiterate points that other people have made. And in fact, what you'll find is, if your council's going in the direction you like, and you talk too long, you may talk some other people out of it. You may raise questions. I'm a lawyer by trade, and someone once told me, and they were absolutely right, the shorter your oral argument, the more likely you are to win. So I would keep that advice in mind. You know, be smart, ask questions. Your staff is there to help you. Don't be afraid to ask hard questions, but again, in a civil manner. Be respectful that everyone in the room, your staff, your City Manager, your colleagues, again, are all there for the same purpose. But what's really key is when you have public testimony. One of the, I don't want to call it a trick, because that makes it sound like it's manipulative. But a really good thing to do is as you're having the discussion, to do is, as you're having the discussion, marshal arguments from the public testimony. "I agree with Miss so-and-so," or with the speaker who said. Because then the public knows that you're listening to what they say. They often are talking up you, and they have no idea if you're making a grocery list in your head, or planning what you're gonna have for breakfast the next morning. But if you can refer back and say, "You know, I agree with the speaker who made the following point," then all of a sudden, people are gonna go, "Hey, I got cited there, I listened to me, that's good." But again, it's really important to remember that you are there to work for the good of the city, you're not there to prove you're smarter than anyone, better than anyone. Don't make it personal, try and solve problems, focus on getting where you want to be, not on trying to be polarizing and say, "Those are the good guys, those are the bad guys, I'm the good guy, you're the bad guy." And I think what's really key is that, as you go through this, that the goals that you set be objective goals. Again, it's not about what's best for this constituency, or what's best for me, or what will make me happiest in the long run. It's about working with goals that are best for the city overall. And those can be pretty objectively defined. You won't always agree on what they are, you may not always agree on the best way to get there. But if everyone agrees that what we're trying to do is do what's best for the city, you will find that for the remarkably high number of your votes, they'll be unanimous, or easy to take. And there always will be controversial issues, but if you've built up relationships on the easy stuff, when you get to the hard stuff, it'll be easier to deal with. Civic engagement. Public hearings, don't cut it. There's always a move to say, "Gosh, more people come, and I have to sit and listen to them, and gee, that's two minutes, I'll never get back of my life." But people need to feel like you are listening to them, and they need to be invested in what you're doing. If you have a position you're trying to put forth, the best way to get there is for people to feel that they helped shape your ideas in getting there. If they think you just got there without listening to them, they don't have a stake in the game. Again, I'm a jury trial lawyer, and I will tell you, with a jury, if you can get the jury to come to a decision without you having to tell them where to go, they will stick to it like glue, because it's their decision. But if you've just told them where to go, then someone else can also tell them where to go. And it's the same thing with your constituents. If they think that what's coming out of the city council is reflective of what they want, they will defend it to their death. But if they think that you're going off and doing things without listening to them, there will be lots of bad feelings, and even if you're making good policies, implementation will be that much harder. So teamwork is key, but you have to define the team broadly. It's your council members, it's your city manager, it's your staff, and it's the public. And again, it's just about building relationships with all of those groups, being respectful of them, working with them all, recognizing there are gonna be differences, but moving forward anywhere. So I think that one of the most important things people can do is not openly disagree with people. Say, "I have a differing opinion, how should I handle this?" "Well, you know, it's not that important to me, I won't say anything." You were elected to govern, and governing is sometimes saying, "I do disagree." If you do it in a respectful, in a civil manner, there shouldn't be a problem. It's okay to be in the minority, it is okay to lose votes. It's not okay to feel bad about losing votes, and say, "Well, you put me in the minority, so the next time, I'm gonna screw you over." No, you're gonna take votes, and you're gonna lose some, and that's okay. That's what governing is all about. And sometimes you're gonna be in the majority, and sometimes you're gonna be in the minority. But if at this point in time, you always have good relationships with all your colleagues, that's all they are, is their votes. They're not referendums on how good a person you are, whether you dress well, or you're nice. They're simply votes on policy, where intelligent people can disagree. So, my alarm has already gone off, I've spoken too long, Rod will tell you, I do that at meetings all the time anyway. But I will tell you that we have been so lucky in Santa Monica to have Rod Gould as our city manager for the last five years. I have learned so much from him, and you are lucky to have this opportunity to learn from him as well. So thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, and good morning. You can see why I am so pleased and proud to have worked for people like Councilmember Gleam Davis. Wasn't that terrific? Yes. Yes. Allow me to begin by thanking and congratulating all of you who have run the gauntlet in the electoral process to achieve your new roles, whether new council members or mayors. I am quite sure that the campaign was difficult, at its time, it was vexing, maybe it was excruciating. And it amazes me that of the quality of people who are willing to go through that process to achieve what you have achieved. But now, it's time to really get down to work. And the topic of this session is on the council-manager relationship. And so, let's talk a little bit about the form of government that is practiced primarily here in California. Council-manager form is the most common form of local government across the United States, and is the fastest-growing form of local government in the world. Now, it sprang from the progressive era at the beginning of the 20th century. At that time, American cities were cesspools of graft, and corruption, nepotism, and patronage. If you worked for a city, it was because you knew somebody, and you were expected to be obedient to that person. And so, not surprisingly, services were pretty poor, and people lived poorly in urban environments. The progressives thought that there must be a better way, and their idea was to combine two necessary systems. The first is local representative democracy. That's where you come in, where the people elect their governors, and do so in an open fashion. And these folks, you all, our elected officials, set the direction for your cities. You in turn then hire a professional manager to administer the fairs of the city daily, to carry out your direction, to make sure that services, activities, and programs are delivered effectively and efficiently, and to advise you on public policy. Now, this simple dichotomy, policy and administration, is easy to describe, but in practice, it's anything but that. And it's a relationship that, when it works well, will lift your cities, and allow you to do great things for your residents and businesspeople, and so you need to nurture that relationship, you need to work it. So, what's the best way for you to undertake this? First is to understand where your city managers are coming from. In the early days, most city managers were engineers and technicians. You were laying out roads, putting in sewer systems, building cities. That's no longer the case. Now, most city managers have a wide variety of backgrounds, finance, administration, planning, operations, technology, there's a lot of things to know. And they oversee the affairs of your city, they are your chief administrators. In some ways, they're somewhat similar to CEOs in corporations, with you being the board of directors. They serve at the pleasure of the council. We can be dismissed at any time, for any reason, if you're unsatisfied with our work. The best council members that I've seen throughout my career, and the ones who are most effective at getting their goals accomplished, are the ones that show respect for everyone involved in the process. They show respect for their fellow council members, the community at large, the staff, the speakers, the press, and the process. When I listen to council members tell me that their cities are fractious, that council meetings are out of control, and highly disrespectful, when you go in and look, you'd notice that oftentimes, it's the behavior that's being modeled by the council itself, that's being picked upon by the public. And the public is mirroring what they're seeing happening at the dais. If you're at each other's throats, if you're calling each other names, if you're being snarky and unhappy, then the public is going to give you more of that back. If on the other hand, you are taking this matter seriously, if you're showing respect to one and all, then the public generally gets the picture, and you get better, more civil, and more constructive meetings. So, what's the manager there to do? Well, in many ways, your success is our success. We want to make sure that you, as a body and individually, are successful. We recognize that what you've done is very hard, to run through the electoral process, to become appointed by your peers, to lead your cities, and we want to make sure that you're as effective as possible for all the residents. This is our professional code of honor, this is what we're about. We want to help each of you succeed, but we will not be any one council member's ally. We could be your confidants, if you wish, but we're not going to socialize with you, there has to be some professional distance. We will advise you, you can accept or reject our advice, you can modify it to whatever you wish, but please understand that we are there to make sure that everyone is successful. If the council is viewed as successful, and the staff is viewed as doing its job, then the manager is viewed as being very successful, and that's what we all seek. So, your relationship with the manager is pretty important. Now, you may have said, "Well, I ran because I thought things were, you know, not working particularly well in my city, and the manager's there, and so I need to set things right." Please understand that your city manager is not a policymaker. He or she does not have a vote. He or she should not be viewed as the sixth or eighth council member. We should be viewed as policy units. You set the direction, and we carry it out. We may have advised something different, but when you legislate, then that becomes our policy. And we will go out and defend it, and explain it to everyone, and we'll carry it out to the best of our abilities. That's our job, that's what you pay us to do. Now, it's sometimes tempting to want to get in and begin to direct the staff. Please resist that temptation. Even if you, in your work lives, are in charge of large groups of employees, if you view yourself as a natural leader or manager, please let your manager and senior staff do our jobs. If you have something that needs to be done, take it to the manager, explain what needs to be done. If it's consistent with the work plan, if it's consistent with the budget, the chances are, the manager will go to work on that with the staff, and carry out your wishes. If it's something new, if it's outside of council policy, if it's not in the budget, if it's not in the work plan, then the manager's probably going to suggest that you help put it on the agenda, get three or four votes, and then becomes part of the council policy, and then he or she will carry it out. That's how the system works. So, you are not in charge of all the employees in your city. Do not give them the impression that you are their supervisors. This can happen in very innocent ways. You can happen to know certain of the employees, you grew up with them, their kids went through sports with your kids, and you just mentioned a one off the hand that you'd like to see this happen, or that happen. And they want to please you. You know, we look up to our elected leaders, and so, there's a tendency to want to go make that council member happy. When that starts happening, then the whole relationship begins to break down. And so, please resist that temptation. You can ask questions of the staff, and most managers want you to ask questions of the staff, but if you want them, something to happen as a result, reserve that conversation for your talks with your managers, and have those regularly. Also, now that you're newly elected, you aren't expected to have all of the answers. Now, you may have had all the right positions on the key issues in your community during the campaign, but there is a lot to know. And give yourself some time to assimilate it. Don't be pushed into taking a position on every major issue right out of the chute, because you may embarrass yourself. If these issues were that simple, they would have been resolved years ago, believe me. So, take some time, study, ask the questions, read, come to meetings and conferences like this, build your base of knowledge, and as Councilmember Gleam Davis was just explaining, build your relationships. That way, you'll be far more accessible. And we want you to hold us accountable. If you feel that your city is not achieving your goals, then you need to take that up with the manager. Now, as she indicated, the goals should be verifiable, they should be objective, and they should be achievable. Now, don't set pie-in-the-sky goals, and then be shocked that the manager hasn't eliminated traffic congestion, or poverty in your community in six months. That's probably not likely to happen. So, work to make sure that there's widespread agreement on the council, and with your staffs, that the goals that you're setting are doable, actionable, and that there are adequate resources to do them. And I also want to caution here, and say that in many cities in California, even though the Great Recession was technically over, according to economists, in 2009, many of you are just coming out of that recession now. Just about now, your revenues are about to back to where they were in 2007 or 2008. But remember, during this period, your expenses were rising, and certainly, your benefit costs are rising far faster than your revenues. And so, you probably have some structural issues that you need to address. And that means that all of the promises that you made on the campaign trail may not be possible right out of the chute. And you need to be honest with your constituents, and with each other, about what you can't do immediately, what you're going to need to do a little bit less of, and what you're going to have to defer, until your city's finances are strong enough. Otherwise, you're going to put yourself in financial jeopardy. And then you'll be in the worst possible position of having to cut services and staffing at a time that people think we're in economic prosperity. So be careful there. Sorry for the lecture on that. Talk with the mayor. Now, in most of your communities, the mayor's title is traded around, it's largely ceremonial, but nonetheless, the mayor works with the manager to set the agendas for each of your meetings, and so let the mayor know what you're interested in, and he or she can think about how he's going to help the whole council succeed. This is a very important relationship. And the mayor and the city manager should be meeting regularly, and talking about all manner of issues. It's incredibly important. Be very aware of the Brown Act. I know that you're getting some sessions on this at this conference, so understand the sunshine laws, understand the Brown Act, understand AB 1234. Always stay scrupulously in compliance with all of these laws. Your city attorneys. Now, this is the other position that you choose as a council. You probably hire the city attorney, or maybe you hire the firm that provides legal services for your city. There's great confusion in the public about what the city attorney does. Some people believe that the city attorney is there to provide free legal advice to all the residents of the town, on divorces, land issues, what have you. You know that's not the case. The city attorney's also not your personal attorney as a council member, you've got that as well, right? The council gets legal advice from the attorney as a body. And the best way to work with the attorney is to ask your questions early on, but don't ask the question, "Is it legal to do this, or that?" It is best to ask the question, "If I want to get here, if this is the policy goal, what is the legal means for getting there?" And the good attorney will do more than just tell you what's illegal, the good attorney will tell you what's the legal means to achieve your goals. So, work closely with your attorney, it's a tough job, and most of them are quite competent. So then, there's always a tension between the council and the staff, and some members come to their councils believing that the staff is the enemy, that the staff are human speed bumps, and you know, trying to thwart their achievement of goals. The vast majority of people that work in public service in California and across the country are in it for more than a paycheck. They are driven by altruism, they're driven by a desire to do something better for their communities, to leave it better than they found it. And if you tap into that, they will do extraordinary things with you. Not everybody, but most. And so, if you have a good, respectful relationship with your staff, if you understand that there will be errors, there will be mistakes, there will be setbacks, and you don't resort to public lashings, and you learn from these mistakes, and support staff, staff will do incredible things for you. They really are invested in this notion of local representative democracy. They really believe that our government systems work best at the local level. And so, please keep that in mind. Again, the work is going to be done by the staff. You may be highly competent in your work life, and your personal life, but you're in the job of steering the ship now, not rowing it. Let the staff row it, and work through the manager for doing so. So some suggestions in your relationship with your fellow council members, manager, the attorneys. Everything gets down to, how does the small group operate? If you have a council of five or seven members, and one person changes, I would submit to you, it is a different group, and the dynamic will change. And you need to be astute in learning how people absorb information, how they react to different political pressures, how they come together to make good policy decisions, how they interact with staff. If you're very successful at that, you're going to get a lot of good things done for your community. And you also need to learn to count to ten. Sometimes, things are going to happen in the midst of the debate, in the midst of public strife or battle, and there's a tendency to want to lash out, and put that person in his or her place. Resist it. Count, be careful, be patient, and it'll pay you later. I think it's very important that many of the decisions that you make will have long-term ramifications for your communities. So you need to think not only about what it means for your current residents, the ones that have been there for a long time, but your newer residents, the ones who have recently come to your community, or been born, as well as the generation that hasn't even been born yet, or come to your town. So you need to think long-term for a lot of these decisions. And as Gleam says, think about why you ran for office. It wasn't about personal power, or grandizement, it was about serving your community. Let that be your compass in all things, in all ways. The best council members really do their homeworks. They read the agenda ahead of time, they send their questions to staff prior to the council meetings, so that they can get those answers, so you don't spend a lot of time at the council meetings going through twenty questions. They're absolutely prepared, they know what's most important. You look at the alternatives, you don't immediately settle on whatever the staff recommendation is. And the manager, when getting questions from individual council members, if they're more than a yes or no answer, should be sharing that information with all of you, so that you all have the benefit of the discussion. And I think it's a good, I think, political hygiene to have policies and rules for how the council comports itself. So you might want to consider adopting something like that, about how you want to act as a body, what your culture is as a council. Talk to the attorney early, achieve your policy goals under the law, rather than, you know, trying to determine what is not legal. I mentioned all of that before. Communicate through the manager to the rest of the staff. If somebody lets you down, if you see an error, if you see a mistake, if you suspect something is wrong, don't take it up publicly, don't chastise people, don't put up with the staff bashing in council meetings. Instead, have that conversation behind closed doors with your manager. Then it is his or her job, then, to go through the progressive disciplinary process if appropriate, or to provide you information that may persuade you to the alternate that maybe things were actually correct, but to make those changes that are necessary. Have that conversation behind closed doors, that is the best way to get things done. Have regular team-building sessions, and find other ways to strengthen the relationship with the rest of the council. Sometimes, these are social gatherings, sometimes, these are celebratory functions, where you get together to, you know, celebrate something that's been achieved lately. Find ways to keep the council close to one another, that's very important. And learn something new every day. Your business of municipal fairs is one of the most varied and diverse in the world, and it's constantly changing. There is no way that you can master all of the topics, all of the functions, all of the issues that are caught up in governing your city or town, no matter how big or small, urban or rural, doesn't matter, there's just too much there. So, to the extent that you can be constantly learning, by coming to sessions like this, by being involved with the League of California Cities, by going to sessions at your local universities, the more you can learn, the more effective you're going to be, I think the more you'll find it satisfying as well. We talked about having realistic goals, achievable, measurable, motivating, and then you should be receiving information back from staff regularly about goal attainment. What's been achieved, where you fell short, what needs to be adjusted, there should be constant checking back, to make sure that you're on track. Also, you have limited amount of time that you can spend on various issues as a council, and you ought to be checking periodically, to make sure that you're spending time on the most important issues. Not just the easiest ones, not the ones that people complain most about, but the ones that have the most substantial impact on the quality of life, and the safety and sustainability of your cities. So make sure that you are spending the time where it is most valuable. And then lastly, or second to lastly, have some fun. I mean, this is terribly difficult stuff. At times, you're going to wonder why you ever ran for your city council seat. It's oftentimes a thankless task. People are after you right and left, misinformation abounds, and people feel the license in America now to take out all of their frustrations, and their personal lives, on their government, and you'll be the recipient of some of that. Nonetheless, there are opportunities for success and achievement, and you should celebrate those. Some additional resources for your consideration. The Institute of Local Government is the think-tank arm of the League of California Cities. I commend you to go to ILG's website, there's a ton of information there, for information for newly-affected officials such as yourself. It's free, download it, I think you'll find it substantive and helpful. Also, a guy named Larry Tramitola wrote a really good book, a couple- Also, a guy named Larry Tramitola wrote a really good book a couple of years ago called, "Now What: A Practical Guide for Newly Elected Officials." It's really well done, I commend that to you as well. So that concludes my remarks. Congratulations on your achievement. I wish you all the best success with your cities in California. And now, Councilmember Davis and I are happy to answer any questions or hear any comments you have about this presentation. Thank you.